Still getting used to the gavel thing. Pardon my voice, still getting over a bit of cough. Before we get started tonight, I wanted to mention we've got a couple of empty seats here tonight. Commissioner Gray is going to be unable to make it. He's just been admitted to the hospital, so keep in thought to them there. We're leaving some pressure from incision, I don't want to get into details. Also Commissioner McEvoy is...
Where's the McEvoy? Oh BJ.
BJ has another very important commitment tonight. His team, the First Flight Little School Lady Seahawks basketball team, are in the championship game tonight, so wish them well. They're probably doing that by as we speak here. It's a big night for local sports, we'll keep that in there. The first thing up is pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Can you hear me better now? Is that better? New mics, right?
Yes.
Alright, everybody hear me alright? Before we do the moment of silence, I want to ask you all to keep the family of Billy Gray in your thoughts and prayers. Billy was the town's chief building inspector for about two decades before he retired. We're thinking of his wife Suzanne, his daughter Unique, and their entire family. So join me for a moment of silence. Small group up here. We have an agenda before you. I'll make a motion when you approve the agenda. Alright, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. We have an agenda, thanks. First item on our agenda is the public hearing for the recommended amendment to Chapter 153 zoning. 153.071 Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control. We're going to update that ordinance hopefully to meet some state requirements. Again, you've had this here a packet for a little bit.
Thank you Mayor. There will be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Kewa Hills Board of Commissioners. Following the rules of procedure will apply to this hearing. A public notice was published in the newspaper and posted on town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for this subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will be reporting all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking, please go up to the microphone at the course, introduce yourself, and state your address. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes unless you are speaking on behalf of a group or have submitted your comments in writing in which you will be receiving a five-minute exception. Again, please identify yourself when you come up. There will be no debates. This public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kewa Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: A recommended amendment to Chapter 153 zoning. Chapter 153 zoning, specifically Chapter 153.071 Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control, to update the ordinance to meet state requirements. There are no individuals who have signed up, so I will call from the floor at this point if there's anyone out here would like to speak.
Right, you guys had... Excuse me. Coughing, not giving up. You had the weekend to go over it. It's kind of lengthy, a lot of it's technical and has to do with state requirements, but wanted to make sure it had as many proofreaders as possible. Do you guys have any questions about it, any thoughts? I'll counter with it. Questions or objections seem pretty straightforward to me. Leading one section in whole and basically replacing it with a better written one, I guess. This is kind of a technical wonky question, real quick, for whoever. Let's see. Page four of fourteen, item seven. I think I read this three times in a week, maybe I'm just reading it wrong. Basically says something like apartment planning special review of plan within thirty days. Failure to approve or disapprove, but within thirty days should be deemed approval. Okay, got that part. The next part says town will approve or deny revised plan with it. Oh, I see revised. I just answered my own question. Were revised. Caught it. Alright, now I understand. Other than that, it's enough to make your head hurt or help you fall asleep. No offense to people who love this kind of work. So, erosion control. Alright, jokes aside, we are looking for a motion. I'll make a motion of approval. And we need a consistency statement.
Have you closed the public hearing yet?
Oh, I thought you'd closed it before we started talking.
No, that was just for discussion.
Oh, that's included.
So, once you included your discussion, you will have to close the public hearing.
Alright, so I do that. I hereby say, discussion is closed.
That'll work.
Alright, skipping back. Again, we're looking for a motion with the consistency statement. Alright, then I'll make a motion of approval. The Board of Commissioners finds that the amendment to 153.071 Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control modifications should meet state's requirements as consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kewa Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides regulation for land disturbing activities in order to prevent the pollution of water, watercourses, and other public and private property from sedimentation, and also reduce damage to storm drain facilities. Couldn't have said it better myself. A motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed today? No. Motion carries against. Alright, next item on the agenda is introductions and presentations, the first of which is the... What's that? Oh, I jumped to get public comments. Skipping ahead on myself. Okay, let's keep these straight. This is the point in the meeting, the first of two points where we ask the public if they'd like to make any public comment. I have some rules. If anybody's interested, I will read this little card. If anybody's interested in speaking at public comment at this time. Hearing none, I will save you more mumbo jumbo for another time. So I guess we are back to where I was just headed, which is the Community Appearance Awards 2018-19. Join me over here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Sue Kelly, and I have the honor and privilege of standing up here tonight to share with you our biennial Community Appearance Awards. The Community Appearance Commission was created by the Board of Commissioners eight years ago, and it was tasked with to make recommendations to the board about how to enhance, maintain, and continue the beautiful things about our town. It's been a whole lot of fun doing this. I would like to mention the names of the people who are on the Community Appearance Commission. Natalie Painter is our vice chair. Bambos Charalambos, Billy Dorn, Dave Rollins, Melinda McCowsky. John Winley represents as a voting member of the Board of Commissioners. And Chip Almany represents the Planning Commission. And I saved this one for last, Bob Schiffer. Bob's leaving us, and we're really sorry to see him go. He's been a great asset, and he's moving on to other things. I'd like to just say really quickly that we've done a lot of things as the CAC, and right now we have two campaigns that are going. One is to try to get rid of as many of the cigarette butts that get thrown all over our beaches and our streets and our yards. So we have some little butt holders that we give out to folks. There are a few over there, if you know anybody who would use one. And we're also very interested in seeing as few plastic bags out there as possible. So we also have some lovely free reusable bags. There's some there too. Please help yourself to those. The two things that the CAC decided to start again that had been done before, one was trash attack. And I've got to mention that really quickly because it's coming up not too far. Saturday, April 25th, is trash attack for this year. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Aviation Park. It's a great event. It's a great family event. There's free t-shirts, there's free food for breakfast, free food for lunch, and all the gear that you need to go out and pick up trash along our streets. It's a big thing, it's a lot of fun, and I hope that you will participate and maybe encourage other people to participate as well. So, to the reason that I'm standing up here tonight, there are three awards that the Community Appearance gives out, Community Appearance Commission gives out every two years. And the first one I'm going to talk about is the Most Attractive Business. Now, this award goes to businesses, and we have included churches in the categories sometimes, but it is not a residential thing, it is a commercial thing. And the first one that we are happy to announce is the one we've most recently added, and that is the Most Attractive Business in a multi-unit complex. We have a pretty good system, I think, of coming up with these. We have some fairly significant criteria that we look at, and we have a number system that we use to rank. We nominate some, and then we all go and inspect and use this numerical system to determine who should get the award, and then there are four honorable mentions along with it. But the things that we look at are the overall appearance of a building, we look at the landscaping, that ends up being a pretty important thing about how a business looks, we look at parking, parking lot, is it sufficient? Is it in good shape? Is it fairly easy to get in and out of this business? We look at cleanliness, we want to know how they handle their trash. And certainly, this isn't necessarily the whole list, but also generally it's appropriateness for our beach environment. So they're the kinds of things that we're looking at. And we give this award once every two years, and it's now my pleasure to make some announcements of the winners. So as I said, the first winner is a business that's part of a multi-unit, you know, could be a strip mall, could be more than one business, and we are dealing with one of the buildings. So the first one that's going to be an honorable mention, and if someone's here from the business, we hope you'll stand up and then go join the mayor. We're going to do pictures and hopefully get y'all's pictures in the newspaper as well. But the first one of the runner-ups for the multi-unit is the Front Porch Cafe. The next runner-up, so to speak, in the multi-unit is Slice Pizzeria.
Did you bring a margarita?
We're going to want to take your picture later, okay? The next one, honorable mention, is Chips Wine and Beer Market. And then the last of the runner-ups is 1006. So the winner of this category, multi-unit, is Country Deli. We'll get all these to the folks who couldn't make it. We knew that Country Deli had some conflicts possibly tonight. So the next group that we're going to look at is the Most Improved. So this is a business that has, in some cases it's changed hands and become something else, but what it was is now improved over what it used to be. So the first one that we would like to give as runner-up is Sandbars, Raw Bar, and Grill. Thanks a lot. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next one in the Most Improved category is Jack Brown's Beer and Burger Joint. And the next one in the Most Improved category is the CC Motel. And the last one of the runners-up for the Most Improved is Ashley's Espresso Parlor. And the winner in this category is Mom's Sweet Shop.
Thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, now the award, the last award remaining is the overall award, the most attractive in our determination for the last couple of years. And of the runners-up, the first one is Professor Hacker's Lost Treasure Golf. And the next one in this category is Southern Bank. Next, we have Rooster's Southern Kitchen. And the last of the runner-ups is Nax Head Hammocks. Now, Mom's Sweet Shop, they are not here, so they didn't get theirs, but we will definitely get it too. The winner of the best overall Community Appearance Award, but this time, is the Brewing Station. Thanks to Green Incorporated and my father-in-law, who cleans up the parking lot. We'll do that now, do the picture. If we can have everyone who is here who got a certificate or an award, please stand up front with the mayor and have your picture taken, which we hope we will get in the newspaper.
He was not put under one there.
There we go.
You all will be in the paper, I promise. I was prepared to like mess up something, but I apologize.
There's a minimal mess up.
This is a very special moment for us tonight, second item here. You notice we have a scout, a boy scout here. I think we're just scouts now, right? Call it scouts. You all might not know, but I was also a boy scout when I was growing up. I was very fortunate to have my father be my scout master. I ended up making it to Eagle, and my father, he was also an Eagle Scout. Very few people know that even my grandfather, his father, was also an Eagle Scout. So it runs in my family, three generations of them here. So it makes me very proud anytime anybody in the community can reach this fantastic achievement. For those of you who have not been involved in scouting, you might not know all that goes into all the things a scout needs to learn about civic mindedness, about the environment, about surviving in the wild, all sorts of things. To get to the point, to put together an Eagle project, you've probably heard of that, usually involves a lot of man-hours and a lot of organizational skills, a great deal of leadership. I also understand that our Eagle Scout here today is also a member of the Order of the Arrow. If you're not familiar with that, that is an honor bestowed by his fellow scouts for being an exemplary camper or leader in his group. So a very, very rare thing indeed to see an Eagle Scout, and almost even more rare to see an Order of the Arrow. So congratulations on all the things that you've accomplished. It's a big honor. You are in a rare group. Not talking about myself, but, sorry, there we go. George, I'm sorry, Gerald Ford, of course, is an Eagle Scout, and you know a lot of those stories as well. I have a letter that you've probably received a copy of. I also have a certificate here for you from the town, the Mayor's Achievement Award. Seems like I'm recording, I don't know. But I also have a great copy of a speech by Theodore Roosevelt, which I think you'll find very instructive on the role of leadership and doing your civic responsibility in a republic, in a democracy. So thanks for all you're doing. Come up here and we'd like to get a photo with you. I'm so sorry. So flustered that I'm forgetting to say your name. Joseph, what's your last name? Joseph Lewis, I'm so sorry. Let's see, let's see, let's... I'll also have another gift for you. A little pen for you too. Want you to hang on to that? Maybe we'll give a hand shake. There you go. That works. Like that? Oh yeah. Awesome.
Just to add on, the project that he did for his Eagle Scout project is a platform in the middle of Nax Head Woods. If you had ever been there before, it had sides on it, it was a little bit scary. I take eight to ten elementary school kids out there once a week, and I'm constantly like trying to keep them from falling in, and now I don't have to do that anymore, so
Alright. Is there any old business we need to discuss? Alright, moving on to new business, the Street Improvements and Recommendations for Fiscal 2020 and 2021. Thanks in advance for the wonderful report that we got to read. It goes into great detail all the way into the five-year and 10-year plans. Appreciate all the work that went into that, our engineer here, Pete, and the committee as well.
Okay, thank you Mayor. It's an honor. This is my 15th time, 15th year working with the town on this, and I remember in the early years, the list of poor streets was daunting. We wondered if we'd ever get on top of these, and now we're almost doing them as fast as they roll down in age from a fair three condition to a poorer condition. I'd like just to mention that we proposed to bid these this year, but we're calling them a fall group and a spring group. Plan would be to bid them at one time, but to have the fall group built in the fall, the spring group deferred until after the first of the year so that we're not disturbing a given area for as long a time as we have in some of our larger projects. This just lends itself to this way. The fall project consists of four streets in the First Flight Village and Landings area. These streets are in the lower areas, near the sound. There's more or less nuisance flooding there that'll be improved by what we do, and all of the streets there are poor, so we'll be taking another hunk of, almost three-quarters of a mile, four streets out of the inventory and bringing them up to new condition. In the spring, we go to sort of a potpourri of streets between the highways, starting from the south, East Dean Street and East Martin Street will be overlaid. That's pretty straightforward, and we'll do a little drainage work in them. Martin Street proved itself susceptible to frost damage. We had to go in two years ago, and the street literally fell apart. It just disintegrated. And we did a repair there, and we'll integrate that repair into this work so we don't totally pay to do it twice. Then, in the middle, Little East Fourth Street, next to the Jolly Rogers, and some people don't even realize that's a public street, but it is, and we'll be overlaying that and trying to see if we can find a way to help the drainage down where it meets the beach road a little bit. Moving on up to Helga and Briggs. East Helga is, the last time we touched that was with a water main project about six years ago, five, six years ago. It's in poorer condition, and we will fix it, improve the drainage a little bit, and then while we're doing Helga things, we'll skip across the bypass, if it's your pleasure. Of course, all this is subject to your approval, and do about a little over 500 feet of sidewalk on the west side, excuse me, the north side, from the bypass westward over to Susan Drive. And then Briggs Street is an interesting one. Right now, it exists in three parts. The northernmost section is paved, then oddly, there's a middle section that's gravel, but it's got paved parking spots for the little multifamily building, and then it goes to nothing. It's a paper street from there south to Helga. And our proposal is to make it all a through street, or more accurately, we'll pave for sure the paved part and the gravel part, and then we'll bid as an alternate for you to select whether to accept or not accept the alternate. Punch it on through to Helga, which would give us some cross-connection benefits for safety and circulation purposes. And we're also looking at an option to maybe place a handful, perhaps four, maybe as many as six, parallel parking spaces along that. A couple of the businesses there have had some parking issues, and it looks like there may be another business trying to go in mid-block there, and some of these older places that were grandfathered in just don't necessarily have as much parking as they might need. We may be able to help alleviate that and/or at certain times in the season provide for some parking for people who walk to the beach from there. So that's not fully sorted out. It's got to wait till we do our topographic survey and figure out what we can fit in there. But that would be designed, surveying would start right away upon your approval. Then we would do the design like in April or so, April and May, get permits made, and put it out to bids in the summer for work to start right after Labor Day. And beyond that, I'll just stand by if you have any questions about any of these projects.
Questions, yes? I think it's a good plan, a good place, and I support it. I know the committee's done a lot of work going over it.
And we thank you for Commissioner McEvoy. He's certainly on the higher calling tonight, wishing success in that, but we had a good SISPC Street Improvement and Special Projects Committee meeting last week, and he was providing good leadership on that, and we took time to get all the newer folks there acclimated as to our long-term thinking.
Right. And we've all been privy to the bigger document, and it's very thorough, and it really goes into a lot of depth of the long-term planning and how these things are into a lot of depth of the long-term planning and how these things are prioritized. And then, I guess we're two years up for reevaluating all the, all the quality of all the streets.
That's right. Every five years, we get a very thorough, every single street in the town that is town-maintained, excluding the bypass, the Beach Road, and Collington, Ocean Bay. All those get evaluated on about a seven or eight item rating scale, and they fall, they go from excellent, good, three grades of fair, and down to poor if they get 50 or more. And when they fall to poor, then they become a priority to be overlaid or fixed in whatever is the appropriate way. And we're now just about getting to the end of that poor list, and the next rating is due in 22 or two years from now.
Last time we did a rating, we added three or so miles from the fair three down to poor.
That was actually over four, but that very years' project quickly got it down to three-something.
Right, yeah. So we're whittling it away faster than they're following into that category, hopefully. So we'll see how that goes in a couple of years.
And of course, end with a motion, as I'm sure the manager will tell you. Hopefully, there's approval of a couple of proposals for me to do the surveying and design work.
Engineer, yes. And their estimates, I guess, yeah. All right. One more shot, questions, thoughts?
Good question. How long does it take to complete the five-year survey? How many people are on that team?
Public Services does it, Steve. I think I'll let him answer that question.
It's awfully thorough and detailed, a big commitment for everybody.
They basically have to do pretty much that and only that for several days.
There's so many different kinds of cracks in the pavement, I was surprised to find all the different names.
I would say it took at least six, typically a four-hour session, and Mike Hogan and Jerry Fralick have been on it the last two times. I'm not sure about their willingness. There may need to be some, some new involvement, but they ride around with Randy Turner, our street supervisor, and like I said, you can't, about four hours is your, your max. And so over...
Take a look at the...
We'll pick up, you know, Thursday mornings, and then we'll go for five or six weeks and, and knock it out.
Sixty-something miles altogether.
We've got a laptop with a spreadsheet right in the back, and as they're calling numbers, we're inputting and saving.
It goes pretty well. Sounds good, yeah. Long-term, I know, we're excited now that we've finished with Bay Drive to be able to put some more energy into more pedestrian stuff, to another, some money's here, right, for that. It's good to see that Helga sidewalk get into the mix. All right. So if it's your pleasure, we'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the street improvement recommendation for fiscal year 2020, 2021 as presented.
Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, fellas. Appreciate it. All right. Our next item on the agenda is committee reports. That Terry had, Terry had sent a... You guys saw this memo?
Mayor Cameron is going to present that.
Oh, you're going to present one? Okay, yes. All right, sounds good.
Mayor is handing out a concept plan that I think that most of us have seen. I'll also get it up here on the screen. All right. So in front of you tonight, this is a Meekin Field recommendation from the Westside Recreation Group. During the January 15th, 2020 meeting, Meekin Field was reviewed, including the online survey results that included 163 entries and a conceptual site plan prepared by staff for redevelopment. Meekin Field is currently closed due to the construction of the new Kilo-Holz Water Tower and Communications Monopole. These projects have disturbed much of Meekin Field, which will require expensive work to reopen the park. The WRG and staff have identified Meekin Field's state of disrepair as an opportunity to fully redevelop the site since significant funds will be required to bring it back to a usable park. Recommendation makes the most of this unique opportunity while, by proposing modification of the site layout, including changes that will meet several recreational needs. After discussion, the group finalized its recommendation for redevelopment of Meekin Field in conjunction with the attached site plan, which you'll all see on the screen and also in front of you. Expand and improve existing park and drive-al to include drop-off circle, have potential connection to adjacent shopping center. Relocate and construct new, larger restroom facility. Separate cell provider data buildings with public art shown as an art wall and landscaping buffers. And redesign the existing softball slash temporary soccer field into three multi-use fields to include soccer, practice field, and year-round turf practice field. And also explore the option of multi-use basketball, and if there's a possibility of a regulation-sized soccer field, which is quite boring, as long as it does not remove any other recreation. Additional to that, during the WRG's January 15th meeting, they came up with a couple more good items that could be added onto this plan. An expanded playground area for ages zero through 12 by including all-inclusive accessible play equipment. Explore recreational trending modern slash alternative playground equipment examples include bouldering, climbing wall, ninja core, zip line, pump track. Incorporate greenways and paths around the park. And/or amenities, including adult fitness trail. And confirm that the existing lighting is compatible with any recreation that is proposed. And also incorporate ornamental landscaping in two-part, part design. As you see it in front of you, if you have any particular questions, this was a, this was a first stab, you know, redesign of the park that was done in-house. You know, if you like what you're seeing, this is something we'll, you know, definitely do a cost estimate and do a conceptual site plan and bring it back to you like that. We do have two members of the Westside Recreation Group in, in the audience tonight, so thank you guys for coming. If you could stand up and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Christine Damarose-Malvin on the Westside Recreation Group.
Hello. I'm Dylan. Dylan, I can sound part of the Westside Recreation.
They put some hard hours into discussion on this, but everybody's very excited, and some good discussions happened.
How much larger is a regulation soccer field versus what is proposed in this draft?
Steve may know better than me. I don't know a ton about soccer or, you know what the dimensions are. It's quite large. I know we tried to spin it on here, but also...
Is it a feasible, is it a feasible option for the space?
My understanding is the soccer field is a range, whereas a football field, they're all the exact, it's got to be 100 yards, and the width is set. Soccer field can be as much as 120 yards long. You know, to 105, and then the width is a little bit variable, too. It's very close. It's at the, what's shown there is at the very, the smallest size of that range, and that's kind of what Ross has had there, you know, the last 10 years, that they, they do place some league in.
It's already a well-used, has been a well-used resource.
And, and, you know, this facility's not used for any sort of, you know, there's no rec league that's playing here. It's usually practice, pickup, that sort of thing. So that, you know, a field of this size would certainly be well, well-used. If it gets much bigger, the existing tennis courts certainly get in the way as it's designed.
Existing tennis courts, that white space.
They are, yes. They're kind of hard to see as it's scanned, but yes, the white space in the left corner, top left corner.
With this plan, there's a little, I guess, access to, I can't remember the road that runs into the east side of the park. That's kind of like a little neighborhood access to there, but that still be maintained, or is there any plan to change that at all?
This is, it hasn't really, I mean, right now, there's, there's like basically a gate and an entrance there. That's certainly, if that's an interest, that can be incorporated into the plan. I'm sure we still want it to be accessible to that neighborhood. Absolutely.
What's, what's the timeline on this, you know, ideally for, when are they going to be finished wrecking that area? When, when will we be allowed to start working on it, do you know?
I actually met with Ross earlier today, and his, he's hoping to get in as early as March. He doesn't really intend, even if we were to take no action and not go, and just return it to how it is today, it's not likely it'll even be open this summer because the monopole hasn't even been started. The old tower still has to come down. They have a lot of assessment to look into where the construction fence was put into water lines that were cut or power lines that were cut. So there's a lot of assessment work that has to be done by building in grounds before they can even decide how to go forward.
So we do have a little time.
Oh, yeah.
Beat some deadlines.
And, and, you know, and a project like this is certainly a good candidate for maybe an Outer Banks Tourism Board grant. You know, I think the playground previously was part of, part of grant.
Right.
Yes. All, all of Meekin Field was, excuse me, all of Meekin Field was an LWCF grant, which was a land and water conservation grant, which is now a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. It morphed itself because this was done pre-Meredith. I think it was 20, I think 25 or 27 years ago, Meekin Field was done. When I came, we redid the playground, but, um, yeah, the, the time sensitivity comes in, if, if we want to do this, we do have to move forward with trying to get a conceptual plan and some cost estimates, because if we want to do a tourism board grant and we want this to open when the work's actually done, that grant would be due in August. So there is some, some time sensitivity if a grant is the desire of the board. We would need to get some sort of authorization to actually move forward with...
Kind of have a plan before you ask for money.
Yes.
I don't know what it's going to cost before you ask for money.
And, and, and then we can work through a phasing if it's too much.
Right, right, right. You're like doing two...
But we don't, we don't know yet.
Yeah. Depends on what it costs.
And if you, if you look on your screen, kind of where the, my cursor is, or it's labeled as C, that's pretty close to where the existing restrooms are now.
Right.
Which with the new cell data buildings, they're going to be surrounded by barbed wire, and the building is also very old and in not great shape. So this is a good opportunity to kind of separate those uses from the water tower and the monopole and, and that kind of idea of using something like public art.
How tall do you imagine that wall would be able to cover all that?
I don't know how tall those, Steve, you know how tall those bear, the subprovider bear cage fences are?
Ten to 12 feet was a good range.
Ten to 12, yeah. They're tall, right?
Right.
So tall walls, so you obscure that enough.
Right.
So you wouldn't have to look at it. Well, I certainly like all the new ideas that they added the last meeting with the sort of new alternative, interesting kinds of play structures and things that people used to, to get exercise and that sort of thing. Love to see as much hacked into the site as possible. I think, you know, go as ambitious as we can, and like you said, maybe spread it over two years if we, you know, cost more than we're ready to stomach this year. These parking spaces on the bottom left, there's a couple there, but that, most of those will be new, I guess, yeah?
Those, those will all be new, yes.
And do you think we would be kind of looking at the sort of commercial landscaping requirements to do a perimeter as well, or is that not necessary for this?
For this park?
Yeah.
Where it butts a single family?
It's already got some vegetation there.
Yeah, there's, there's some natural buffer there. But yes, if it was a non-compatible use, we'd be wanting, we'd be wanting to provide a buffer between us and... We, Ross and I did meet with Game Time Playsets today, and they had some really cool ideas for obstacle courses and how they're actually interactive with an app now. And you can challenge yourself against people all around the country. Some really awesome, accessible swings, just some, I haven't, I don't get a chance to look at new playground equipment all the time, but they have some really cool ideas, and they're happy to share some ideas and what's trending nationwide as they're the professionals, so.
Right, yeah. My Googling habits has had those ads all showing up in my Facebook feed, and I do so that I keep getting all those...
They're very cool. Very cool.
Yeah. Super. Well, the only other thought I could think to interject into the mix would be some sort of, I think we've had the survey, but maybe reaching out to people who wanted to try their hand at drawing something up, just to see what the public would come up with, or maybe local landscape architects or anybody who's kind of interested in this. Figure the more lines we can get into, the better.
The staff member who drew it for us is a licensed landscape architect.
I know. Pretty work. It's great as a parent of soccer kids, I've spent a lot of time on the sidelines of that field, so, yeah, it'd be great to see what we can do with it. You guys have any other invite you want to get back to this committee report? Otherwise, I guess informally, you guys will look at it at the staff level and come back with some options, or what's the next?
Would you like, would you like the board, would you like us to move forward with trying to get some more formal design and, and cost estimates together for you?
Sure, like, you know, those, those bottom things, how much it costs, how much space they take.
Yeah, so if we can, if we want to apply for, if y'all want to apply for a grant in August, you have some concept, we're going to ask for authorization to do that, but we need something to authorize.
And we, we can also provide, say, like, some alternatives, like where you see the 150-foot by 100-foot practice field kind of towards the Dare Center. We also were looking at that as, what if we did have something that was larger playground equipment, or say, an obstacle course or something like that? So we can provide alternatives to, I mean, Meekin Field has always been field play, organized sport, kind of practice fields. But we can, we can certainly show some alternatives, and that might be something that you want to see.
I like the idea that we go ahead and give staff authority to draw up some plans, bring in some of the alternatives that the Westside Group has discussed, and come back to us and make a proceed.
Right, yeah. Still have time to go a little wider and then the next time you meet.
We're not committing to this 100%, but...
Yeah, 100%, but yeah, let's...
Just flexibility to...
Go a little deeper, get some numbers attached to it. So, yeah, that's a very loose, kind of, yeah, sort of, direction.
It's the direction.
Is that enough direction we need to formalize with a vote or anything, or is that good with consensus?
Yeah, we're good.
Sounds good. All right, that was one committee report. Are there any other committee reports?
Sue nailed it earlier.
Yes, Sue's really... Just the highlight of the show.
Thank you, Sue, for the awards, our money. It wasn't easy to pick the winners. It was close. We had all, all board members had to go out and fill out multi-page worksheets to kind of grade all the different businesses, and we had to come back for two meetings, discuss it, and the final grades. It, it was, there was no slam dunks here. It was a difficult decision, and everybody mentioned that they really should feel proud about that.
All right, the committee reports. All right. The committee reports, I guess the next item on the agenda is Mayor's agenda.
Commissioner's.
Sorry, Commissioner's agenda, sorry. Got ahead of myself again, and I stopped jumping ahead.
Few things, Commissioner's agenda. Last week, on the fourth, I had the pleasure of attending the Restaurant Association meeting. First time I ever attended any of their meetings, and I really was impressed that they have a deep interest and commitment in recycling and being environmentally responsible, and they really are looking to build strong ties with all elected officials and boards in our community to make that happen. So I was really, you know, it was a very productive meeting, it was a good meeting, and, you know, I was really hoping to see kind of maybe our board, being more, staying active with those folks and then really working with them and going forward. On the fifth of last week, First Flight Middle School, I attended the Escape the Vape. I guess it was kind of a, it was kind of a community event based for middle school or high school kids, put on by the Saving Lives Task Force and the Health Department to kind of highlight the dangers and the negative effects that vaping can have on young people. I was really happy they had it at the middle school instead of the high school, because you may be able to break through to some of those kids that are still on the break, or high school may be a little too late. Very well attended by parents and kids, and the speaker was a young man, 16-year-old named Luca Kennard. Luca, at a very young age, developed a very dangerous vaping habit. He was doing up to four jewel pods a day, which is the equivalent of smoking eight packs of cigarettes and nicotine, and eventually had, his parents had to send him to rehab and by his definition, it was more like institutionalized, to give him the treatment he needed to, to get well, which he has, and he really showed, shared a, you know, a good story about how dangerous it is. So like smoking cigarettes, really, the amount of nicotine consumed really is, it is, it's dangerous stuff, so it was very, I took my nine-year-old son with me, too, and tried to scare him to death. We really wanted to traumatize him and imprinting his brain, so it, so I was... So it, so it was a good opportunity for my family. And yesterday, I had the pleasure of being here for our planning board meeting, and I really want to thank Meredith for her excellent presentation on our, on the flood map and the changes involved with that. It's not just a new flood map, it was a very sobering, it's, I don't want to call it scary, but like, there are some very intense and serious consequences to these flood map changes. I had not, I knew eloquently, and explained it as Meredith did, but I really came out of that with a much better understanding. And if any theme that I learned at the end of, whatever you do, folks, keep your flood insurance. The maps may change, but I hope you please hold on to that. But Meredith, thank you very much, you're very good job.
We're beginning of a long time.
Yes.
It's going to be an interesting year. But yeah, thanks for your work.
No, just what John said about last night.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make it. I got hung up on the way home last night. But I did bring the letter that Doc sent to me.
I have it now.
You have that, too, already? I was thinking of you, because all sorts of...
I will tell you, Rachel's already started working on our webpage, and she's going to be putting a lot of information out there for everybody. And we're setting some public meetings that we'll be releasing probably later this week, some in conjunction with Dare County, and some that are just for the town Codelaw Hills citizens to be specific about their property. So those dates will be out here soon, and we hope everybody will take interest and come out and learn a lot more about the new maps and the regulations that are going to be associated with them.
And the grandfathering your good rape.
Yes.
That's the biggest one, right? That's one of the big things. So many things to think about with that issue. All right. Check my stuff, because I keep trying to skip things. Next item is the mayor's agenda. So I wanted to mention, if any of you, for me with the name Brian Perry, he's the Buxton Volunteer Fire Chief, and he was just awarded the 2020 North Carolina Volunteer Fire Chief of the Year State. He's been working down there for forty years. Super honor, so if you run into him, he'll pat on the back for all the hard work, and that's, that's a great honor for him. Also, one other public service announcement. Just to remind that this room here will be, the meeting room's going to serve as the early voting site next week for the upcoming primary election. Early voting action begins tomorrow, February thirteenth. And we'll go through the twenty-eight. Hours here will be eight AM through seven-thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Early voting is also available on Saturday, that's February twenty-ninth, from eight AM to three PM. If you want to turn in the week, that's good to know that you're coming on Saturday to do that. So tell all your friends. Next item is the town manager's agenda.
Yes, sir. I do have one item this evening. As I'm sure you're all aware, we recently had three vehicle accidents in our police department, unfortunately, no injuries, serious injuries to any of our officers. But we are requesting, as we're getting ready to slowly begin the new season, to go ahead and replace those vehicles. We have received some insurance from the earlier two. We're still waiting on the third one. But what we'd like to recommend this evening is that we do purchase the three new vehicles for, at state contract, for a total cost of one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, one-eight-two-thirty-three. The estimated insurance proceeds, including the third one, would be forty-seven thousand, four-oh-nine-thirty-three, and would ask the board this evening to authorize expenditure of eighty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars from the town's unappropriated fund allowance to keep these purchases. And then we'll stay on our same replacement schedule for the other vehicles, but just go ahead and get this done, get them outfitted, and be ready for the season.
Assuming the, the three vehicles are all on the older side, that's why this...
Actually, actually, the last one that was involved in an accident was relatively new. I think we still have one payment left on it. That was the one that Dominion Power, Martin Street. But the reasonable price is because of the state contract, and then you have to add on the, all the equipment. Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. The last one was happening in front of Walgreens, right?
It was, right?
I got a litany of text messages of pictures of my home. So sorry to hear that.
Scary.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation of funds to cover the three new police vehicles. Have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? Town manager's agenda?
That's all, Steve. Thank you, sir.
Town attorney's agenda? Right. And the consent agenda, you want?
Yes, sir. Got three items on here, although it says one and double-two. The minutes from the January twenty-second, 2020 meeting, the monthly report from December 2019, number three, the recommendation for bid acceptance of Collington Road water main improvements. This is a project for NCDOT, it's going to replace a portion of the water mains along Collington Road from Utter Bay, east to Mushtown Street. Collington is scheduled for major improvement, and the water lines are being located to accommodate the improvements and also to replace the asbestos pipes. The total project is being reimbursed by NCDOT. An approval in the consent agenda will approve the four bullets that are outlined there in the consent agenda. The staff recommends approval of the consent agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Questions or a motion?
Questions.
I'll make a motion, do we approve the consent agenda as presented? We've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. We have one more opportunity for public comment. There's been a lot said and seen. Has anybody been inspired to make a public comment?
Very quickly, Sue Kelly for the CAC. I just want to correct something I said. It was Country Deli that was not here to receive their award. Mom's Sweet Shop was in fact here, and he was very complimentary to the town for these awards and very appreciative of receiving it. Thanks.
Very good, very good. Anybody else interested in making a comment, public comment? Hearing none, I will close with a comment. And that is the agenda. Let's leave it at that. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for coming out. We appreciate it.